All right, I'll call to order zoning board appeals meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to all persons interested in or affected by the action of zoning board of appeals here by notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the general laws of Commonwealth Massachusetts. And all amendments there too that a public hearing on the following appeal will be held on Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at times indicated. Zoning board appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. Real time access to the zoning board appeals meeting is available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. Public comment can be addressed as only more of appeals by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. Uh, the zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of Barnes, town of Barnstable dash US dot zoom dot US slash J slash eight four four six three three six eight six two six, or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight four four six three three six. Um, applicants, their representatives, individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. The meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel Eight or High Definition Channel one zero seven two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel video on demand archives on the town of Barnstable's website HTTPS colon slash slash streaming eighty-five dot town of Barnstable dot US slash cablecast public site slash watch slash the number one question mark channel equal sign one. Copies of the applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or emailing anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US. All right, I will call the meeting to order with introduction of board members, Herb Bodensee.
Here.
Uh, Paul Pennard.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Present.
Rodney Tavano. All right. We have everybody but Rodney. Um, notice of recording this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast in the town of Barnstable's government access channel in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, and mess inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence enough. Seeing none, um, we have no minutes to, um, approve tonight. So our first order of business is old business appeal number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three two. Cardy's Furniture as tenants have applied for variance pursuant to section two forty dash one twenty-five B C. Variances for signs in the B and HB districts. The applicant seeks to install an additional sixty-seven point five square foot building sign facing Ino Road and a six square foot freestanding sign, street sign from Nightingale Lane. Both signs exceed the allowable size and number. This subject property is located at six twenty-one Ino Road, Hines, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map three one one as parcel zero zero four. It's located in the highway business HB and Business B zoning district. This was continued from, um, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, I don't think any testimony was taken or members were assigned. So we'll.
There wasn't a full quorum, so we removed the day.
Um, so I will assign our regular members, Herb Bodensee, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, and myself. Um, Attorney Lawler, whenever you're ready.
Um, first, I'd like to introduce my client, Ron Cardy. He's here on, uh, via Zoom. And, um, I think, uh, you folks are familiar with this, uh, building. It's the building, um, just, uh, west of the old Christmas tree shops and Trader, uh, Trader Joe's on one, uh, on one thirty-two. I, um, and, uh, it is a, um, a very, um, unique lot and more importantly, uh, well, not more importantly, but I think more so even the particular structure, not only, um, really in the way that it sits on the individual lots and it meets the variance requirements, um, uh, because the, um, you know, the, the circumstances related to the shape and the, and the and the, and how the building sits, um, uh, you know, it creates a hardship for, uh, for Cardy's Furniture, and I want to point this out and go over the, uh, the variance requirements in, in fair detail. Anna, would you be kind enough to pull up the, um, I guess, pull up the, the map first, not the aerial, but the map?
Sure. Let me share my screen. My computer's a little bit slow. I apologize.
That's all right. I'm a little bit slow too, so that's fine.
It's been slow all day.
Oh, really is.
So, um, Attorney Lawler, oh, the photos, which one do you want?
I wanted the, um, the town, um, website, uh, showing the, uh, the lot, uh, laid out. I think I sent those as well. I think I sent four or five photos plus an aerial map and a layout map.
Oh. Uh, okay. So I'm sorry. What did you say? Property map?
Property map, yes.
For twenty twenty?
No, the other one.
Okay. I just got a message that my internet is unstable. That explains a lot.
You know, if you cut your video, sometimes that opens it up.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. If you could scroll up a little bit on that. So if you look at the, um, just a little bit more, so you can get the, the building centered. If you, um, and I'm sorry, just a tiny bit more. Okay. And if you see this particular building in the back, uh, it's actually, it sits on two individual lots, uh, the smaller lot and the building is cut one-third on the lot that abuts Nightingale Lane. It's, it's almost like a city alley as opposed to a street. There's really no, um, general access over Nightingale Alley. And the, the particular lot again, uh, or the lots, the, the main structure actually faces directly into the Christmas tree building and into, um, uh, and Trader Joe's on the, um, on the north side of the building, it's landlocked. And on the, I'm sorry, the south side of the building is landlocked. And on the north side of the building, uh, it abuts one thirty-two. And if you could pull that up a little bit now, uh, to where you get to one thirty-two. And if you look at how the approach is and the access point, it's a single curb cut with an in and out, uh, Y divided. And the situation right now, um, the way the sign is presently located, and I'll show you that in a minute. It's actually a sign that faces internally into the lot. It does not face outwardly into the lot. Uh, but it creates a tremendous amount of, of difficulty and confusion. And actually, I would suggest safety issues uh, because of this. The, uh, there really aren't, I, you know, in viewing this, there really aren't too many buildings that are or any that I could see that are situated in such a fashion and being that far set back, uh, from the roadway and then also the main building facing, um, uh, another building. If you look at the signage, it's, um, it runs and the present sign faces one thirty-two, but it's on the side, uh, facing one thirty-two, it's on the left hand, left-hand side of the building. Anna, if you could pick up, uh, pull up one of the photographs, um, that show the building. Okay. So the area, it's, there, there you go. That empty white sign is where we're looking to put signage. That actually faces one thirty-two, and you could see on the corner, and I'll show you in a minute on a different sign, right where Anna has the, um, uh, the scrolly, uh, hand. Uh, that's where the, uh, the Cardy sign faces. Now, um, uh, with that facing one thirty-two, uh, cars, you know, are traveling in that one direction. Cars traveling in the other direction coming from, uh, the airport rotary can't see it. Okay? And but you, you have to access from the other direction, but it creates confusion and it creates, um, uh, Mr. Cardy has indicated that there's been numerous times where he has witnessed or customers have complained about multiple, multiple turns on one thirty-two, trying to do U-turns and other factors which create, uh, this particular problem. Anna, if you could show, there's a picture, um, of the, uh, building from across the way. You could pull that up. Uh, that's a different one, but that shows the Cardy sign, uh, facing, um, uh, the, um, uh, westerly direction of one thirty-two. Uh, this is the one that, uh, I took this from across the street the other day. Uh, and if you, if you notice, this is from the, um, the tractor building. Um, the town hasn't had the Christmas tree shops install a series of street trees bordering the property. These have now, since the building has, has been there, have, and they're not controlled or owned by my client, have grown to the point where they're covering up the sign that faces in the easterly direction. Uh, there's the empty white sign. So what's been happening is that cars coming either in either direction get confused as to the location of this. They either pull into, uh, the Christmas tree shops or they, you know, have a tendency to go past and then have to do a U-turn around. Now, there is the big street sign there, but the, because of the unique nature of the lot and where it's situated, and in particular the building, it creates. So all we're really looking to do is to fill that, uh, white sign up and then also have what I actually think is a directional sign within the property, which would probably be allowable, but we were filing for, uh, relief, so I thought it would be appropriate to ask for both. Um, and to have signs on the, on both corners of that particular building. I think it, uh, protects the health and safety of the, uh, residents and visitors of the town in Barnstable. It's certainly in keeping with the zoning. And when you're dealing with such large square footages as this building, um, you know, it, it by no way in any means is overburdening. It's not, um, you know, objectionable in size, if, you know, to the eye. It doesn't, doesn't shock anybody to see a sign on either side of that corner. And because of the way it's situated in the lot, the uniqueness of this lot, I think dictates that or certainly o- opens itself up to allowing, um, uh, for variance. And I think again, um, and I, and I'd like to answer some questions about, I, I know this board uh, takes variances very, very seriously, and they want to make sure that the applicant can demonstrate the variance conditions. Um, you have the proposed sign in front of you. That's been submitted, Anna. If you want to pull that up, you can. I don't care one way or the other. They've seen it. But, uh, probably for the, um, uh, for the public, it's probably a good thing to, to pull that up. That was with the application. I guess you, thank you. Again, very tasteful, not in any way garish or, um, you know, you know, everything is, you know, not backlit. I mean, it's, this is, you know, legitimate, um, you know, sign for purposes of allowing people to have access and, and, and basically, um, you know, time has shown that it creates, you know, not having the extra sign is creating a problem and it creates a traffic, a traffic problem. We would hate to see an accident over it. And my client obviously wants to have, you know, as, you know, the, the appropriate sign is so his clients can find his building and not come, come in upset. And that's sometimes happened, you know, where they go around the road or they can't find it. They come back uh, and then have to then bang another U-turn. Uh, well, there, there goes my Boston accent, um, on, um, on this particular property. So I would love to, you know, answer some questions. I know the board's gonna have some.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Lawler. Uh, did any, uh, Anna, do you mind? I'm sharing the, uh, screen so you can see them. Thank you. Um, does anyone have any, uh, questions for the applicant?
I just have two real quick. Mr. Chairman, um, Attorney Lawler, uh, so on one thirty-two, is that a, that's a double, uh, the entrance, current entrance on one thirty-two, that's a double yellow line, right? That cannot be, so it cannot be accessed from what I believe is westbound traffic, right? Heading towards, say, the police station, uh, that direction. They cannot cross over and, and go into that lot, correct?
They cannot legally do so.
And are there any directional signs? I noticed that along Nightingale, are there any directional signs on Route twenty-eight that would indicate?
There is the main sign on the street which shows where to come in, but sometimes people on one thirty-two are going so quickly that again, it just provides, but it, but it's also for the, the other bound side and, um, you know, people, you know, but by the time they pass it, they come back, they come again.
No, I meant down by the, down by the bank, uh, down on Route twenty-eight where it passes past the, the bank, and I believe there's a car dealership right there. Are there any directional signs on Route twenty-eight that would indicate to come in the back way on Nightingale?
No, but you can't get in the back way. You have to get in the front way. You're not a lot, you can't get in. You'd have to cut through without permission through the Christmas tree shop, then leave the Christmas tree shop and then get back on one thirty-two and then get back in.
I could be wrong. I mean, it, it looks like there's an access off Nightingale. I.
Oh, Nightingale, yeah, but there's no, uh, I mean, that's what we're seeking for is one of the signs is an access, is a directional sign on Nightingale.
Okay, but there's nothing on twenty-eight currently.
No, there's not.
With regard to that. Okay, those are my only questions. Thank you.
And it's a, and it, it, it's just, it's a, you know, this was, um, I'm trying to think of the tide new in a second. I forgot. It was not Bed Bath and Beyond. It was Bed Bath and Beyond at one point, wasn't it? And, um,
It was a mattress.
Yeah, and it was, uh, it, and it was, you know, it was a problem with the, you know, just getting access in. And we're just really trying to, because they, because the way this lot sits and it's so isolated and it's, it's dwarfed by its neighbor that, uh, I think that this will help, um, from a safety standpoint, really.
Are there?
I, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Anna.
And, uh, that was sort of the basis of my question, Attorney Lawler, was the history of this building. So when Bed Bath and Beyond or whoever was there prior, because I know it's been retail for several years now, were there, was there dualing signs on the corner of the building? Were there two signs at the time? Do you know or?
I don't know.
And Anna, we don't have anything in our history about the building, whether we granted variances to previous businesses there or?
No, I don't believe that. I checked. There won't be previous variances. So the, my, I, I think memory serves me correct. It was on the front, but then you can't, but, but then if, but when you approach it, that creates the big problem. If you don't have it on the sign, people traveling on one thirty-two and you're going fairly quickly, and we all know the traffic patterns there. If you don't have this, if you don't have it on the side, they don't see it and then they, they're going too fast to pull in because it's a very narrow entrance, how it was designed. And it was designed long before Mr. Cardy, um, took occupancy of that building and he's, uh, and it, it really from a standpoint of, um, um, again, and again, and, and, you know, that's, that's the hardship. I mean, and certainly, you know, I think we meet the criteria of uniqueness with this particular structure and lot.
Just to be clear, again, I'm just slightly confused about Nightingale. Is there a curb cut on Nightingale that accesses that property? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, the current sign is no lighting whatsoever, the one that faces.
Nightingale's, Nightingale's, Aaron, Nightingale's almost an alley.
Oh, I know. I know it well. I'm up and down it all the time, but Hubbard Painters on the corner of twenty-eight and Nightingale, isn't it?
Yeah, it was on the corner, but the alley, but the road itself is, it, like I said, it's, it's as closest on Cape Cod you can get to an alley.
Yeah. All right. I'm in, uh, yep. I, I'm all set.
Attorney Lawler, uh, one concern I have to start is the way this was noticed. If, the notice wasn't asking for a variance from sign code. There was no sign code referred to in the notice. Um, so I'm a little concerned about that. Um, it just refers to us, our, our power to give a variance as, as the code that you're requesting action on.
Uh, I, I provided that in my application, I'm pretty sure.
Uh,
I did the.
I mean, it would be two forty-sixty-seven, right? You're looking for a variance from. But I don't think the application referenced. Cause two forty-one twenty-five B C.
Variance for signage in the B and HB districts. It says it right in there, signage.
So, but isn't two forty-one twenty-five?
But it's asking for a variance in the signage. It says variance in the signage in the B district. It says it right in the application.
Okay, so, so I'm asking you what zoning code you're looking for the variance from?
Oh, um, I, 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 I'm not sure if I, uh, let me see if I mentioned it in my narrative. I mean, I generally reference the sign it, um, the, the signage code of the, I made a general reference to the entire signage code of, uh, for the B district, which I think covers it. I mean, there's nobody here in objection, I don't believe.
Okay. Well, I mean, again, I just, I.
Probably, I mean, it's been noticed.
I want to look at, I like to look at the intent of, of why we have that zoning code that you're looking for relief from, and I don't have a reference of what zoning code you're looking for relief from. It'd be two forty-sixty-five. But either way, it was, it was not referenced in there.
I mean, it was referenced generally as the signage code on the, on the square footage requirement, and I referenced the variance components and then referenced generally the, the signage code. I, I think that legally is sufficient.
Okay. So can you just tell me which, so you're looking for, from two forty-sixty-five, you're looking for a variance of two forty-sixty-five, which?
Uh, I don't, I, I, uh, Jake, I don't have it right in front of me, so I, I, I built, um, I'll rely on you. You have it right in front of you. Again, I'm not, that's the, I'm not in the, uh, in my, not in my, uh, office. I don't have the two computers running right now.
Okay, so I guess, I, I mean, again, this, we don't really have the power to give variances for sign code in these situations. I mean, it's, it's, we, a structure is not a uniqueness. A structure was placed on the lot. If the, the structure had been placed there because there was a giant boulder in the way or something like that, you know, it would be more unique, but I don't see uniqueness in the zoning district that's a business zoning district on a flat road.
I could not, I could not disagree more. If you read the zoning, um, bylaw, and I know that this board does not like to grant variances, and I, I know that for a fact. The law reads as follows, owing to circumstances related to soil conditions shaped topography of such land or structures. It doesn't say, structures are always built in a, in a, um, it talks about structures. Structures are, are built on every single, you know, if you're seeking a variance that involves a structure, the structure is a component. There's allowable for relief under the variance. It doesn't say that when the structure was built, you know, and this lot is unique. It's a landlocked lot that is, uh, is surrounded by this massive dual lot, uh, in the back and on the east side, uh, and on the backside, there's not a normal street. There's relatively an alley. It's cushioned on one thirty-two with a very limited curb cut that makes it this, I suggest to you, go down one thirty-two, go on twenty-eight. You're not going to find another building with that type of structure situated on the lot similar to that. It is very unique. And that's the law. The law isn't, you know, oh, you had a flat lot twenty-five years ago, but if, if, and, and the lot itself, it's composed of two lots and the building is, you know, is on, um, is separated one-third on the lot that abuts Nightingale and two-thirds on the lot that faces the Christmas tree shop. And Jake, I firmly believe that this, uh, is a unique enough lot to meet the variance requirements under the law. And it's not, just because it's a, yes, it is a flat lot. I'm not gonna, there's probably a slight pitch to it, but certainly to the naked eye, it's a flat lot. But the way, how it sits and how the building sits on it and how it sits in relation to one thirty-two, those are all the factors you have to look into. You don't look at one of them. You look at the factors as a whole. And, and the way that this comes up and the, and the, and the safety issues that have evolved because of the way the signage sits on the building is absolutely a unique lot. And then the hardship I've already gone over. And I knew this was going to be an issue, and that's why I dealt with it directly off the top. But I, I respectfully disagree with you, Jake, that, um, just because they built the lot there thirty, forty years, I mean, the building there thirty-four years ago, um, and everything's changed around it. The curb cuts changed when, um, you know, when, when they've been trying to deal with one thirty-two, trying to eliminate curb cuts, trying to do all this. And that's the uniqueness of the lot, and that is the structure that sits on it, and it's specifically in the statute. If they didn't, if they didn't want structures to be unique, they wouldn't have put it in the statute. It's in there for a reason. And that's what I'm relying on.
Okay, so you're saying there's no other lots similar to it in the zoning district. It's a, it's a complete outlier.
I can't think of one.
Lot across the street, the lot, you know, none of them are similar.
Not even close. It's, that lot across the street doesn't come up on, isn't, the main frontage of the building is facing, is facing Christmas tree shop and facing, uh, Trader, Trader Joe's. Um, the, you know, with a very small amount of frontage on one thirty-two, but because of the tree line of the neighbor, that's part of the hardship. And, and that's a part of the, also part of the uniqueness of the lot, where it sits with its neighbors in particular. And that is the situation. So it, the, the ability for people to see signs is very difficult on how this unique structure sits on that unique lot. The lot itself is, it's, it's the way the structure is and how it is, how it falls on, uh, one thirty-two that makes it unique in that fashion.
Are there other board members have questions for the applicant?
Uh, well, just kind of, um, I don't, I don't want to wa- muddy the waters, but I was looking at Google Maps and the street view. If anybody's noticed lately, they have uh, earlier dates. If you go back to two thousand and fourteen, you can see that Bed Bath and Beyond does have the two-sided sign on one thirty-two, but it also has both the sign facing the Christmas tree shop, like the parking lot, basically. And then it also has the sign that Attorney Lawler is looking to add facing one thirty-two, which is now just a big blank white thing. But I don't know how that figures into this discussion. Um, but also in support of Attorney Lawler, Lawler, just, I don't know if it makes it unique or not, but just the orientation, I think is what you were trying to say was the first, uh, plan that Anna was showing. You can see how it's, it's kind of cockeyed facing one thirty-two, and it's really kind of easier to see from Christmas tree shop. But, um, essentially, if you can go back to two thousand and fourteen, it's easy to see that there were signs on the building in both locations. Um, not just the one. That, now I did notice also that World Market only had signs on one side, but they chose to have their sign facing Route one thirty-two while the sign was blank facing the Christmas tree shop parking lot.
If you only have it facing one thirty-two, people traveling in the westerly direction are always waiting before they can make a turn.
Yeah, it's because of that weird orientation that kind of makes it sort of unique. I mean, most buildings are kind of perpendicular to the road and it doesn't appear to be that case. And.
Yeah.
Looking at all the lots in the zoning district, they're all cockeyed to one thirty-two. It's all the same in the entire zoning district.
That could be, because I haven't looked at it.
I, I, what I'm saying, but not the way that this, not, not the way that this lot is landlocked at the end. You know, this is that, you know, again, I, I, I think we certainly meet the uniqueness, Jake, um, I mean, Mr. Dewey, and, um, with respect to this application, there's, I, I don't see any harm. There's no neighbors coming out to oppose this, to argue.
It's not a matter of that. It's a, a matter of, again, this, this is, I, and I, you know, I've had conversations with town councilors. This should not be a variance. There's, there's a, a proper way to do this. You need to have a special permit provision that allows us to do things like this.
Well, I think it.
Findings.
One, one, no, I'm gonna, one of the, one of the, the parts of being, I, I suggest of being a board is that you have discretion. Now, you don't have a discretion to ignore the law. I understand that. But you have the discretion to make the call if there is a reasonable argument that the variance conditions exist. I think that there's more than a reasonable argument that the variance conditions exist. And that being what we talked about, how it's situated on the lot, how it, uh, And that being what we talked about, how it's situated on the lot, how it, uh, is, you know, affected by the traffic conditions coming and going, uh, the inability to see the trees, the trees covering, um, uh, from Christmas Tree Shop. All these various conditions of the lot, how it cannot be accessed by, uh, twenty eight, uh, other than coming in through.
Six eighty five. Look at six eighty five, two lots over. It's the same situation.
Uh, what's on six eighty five? I don't have it.
Oh, I think it's a mattress store of some kind.
Again, the, the way it is situated, the way the building faces the Christmas Tree Shops makes it look like it's part of that complex. And, uh, the cars coming and going. You know, I can go on. I mean, I'm just repeating myself at this point. I clearly think that there's a valid argument and a strong argument, and that this board has enough information before it and enough evidence before it to make the determination that the lot is unique as far as zoning requirements are concerned.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Well, if I may, um, I'm, um, my faulty memory is going back to, I believe, the Target Store that's on the corner of the Cape Cod Mall. Didn't you have a similar issue there?
That's in its own zoning district. That's in a specific, um, overlay.
Okay, thank you.
That's on the broad. Um, so Attorney Law, you would be asking for a variance from two forty sixty five A, I assume?
Yes.
You want to have three signs. Again, I don't feel like the ask in the application is very clear of what you're asking for and how far. You know, we've had a lot of these recently, and everyone has shown us how much more signage. We're looking for, you know, ten square.
I, I would rather not continue, but I, I, I think that the board has enough information to render the decision based on this.
Okay.
And if somebody wants to appeal it, they can appeal it on that issue. I don't think it's going to happen.
Okay, all right. Um, does anyone else have any other questions before we, um, open for public comment?
Uh, I, I have one question. The, the ask is for a larger sign. Uh, what would be the maximum size, maximum size allowable? How much is this larger than the allowable sign?
Uh, it's in the application. Uh, we're seeking an additional, um, sixty seven points, uh, five feet, um, on this sign, square feet.
So this is sixty seven point five square feet.
I think the other sign is the directional sign. I'm not sure if they even need relief for that, but the one on Nightingale. Um, the, uh, six, an additional sixty seven point five square feet.
So is the current sign at the maximum allowable square footage?
That's, well, because there's also the sign at the end, at, at the top of the driveway, so, but the, the signage is maxed out at the moment.
Because you're allowed to have two signs in the zoning district, and your maximum square footage allowable is at the maximum right now?
Yes, it is. We're seeking for the third sign and to go over sixty seven point five feet.
How large is the street sign currently?
Um. I believe it's around a hundred square feet approximately.
Attorney Lawler, has, has, has the applicant considered moving, flipping the sign from the facing the Trader Joe's Plaza to the?
We talked about it, but the, the issue with that, Aaron, is that the people coming on one thirty two are on the building before they see any signage.
Well, but, well, there's, the street sign is right up on the road, isn't it?
Yeah, but people, you know how fast people drive on one.
I, oh, I get it. I'm, again, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out a, you know.
And it's also for people going in the, it's also for people going in the westerly direction, you know, it just makes sense.
Yep, well, I, yep, I, I agree. I, I find the building to be a tricky one for sure. It always has been. Um, and so I'm not, you know, opposed to it. I just, again.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm making, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The variance request is, is the tricky part, and I, again, I, I've had very little success in persuasion of this board to, anyway, let's keep moving.
All right, so if there's no more, um, questions, we'll open for public comment. We did re, receive one letter from Attorney Kenny, uh, representing the owner of the Christmas Tree Shops Plaza, um, in support of the project. Um, is anyone here that'd like to speak to this in the public? Seeing none, uh, I'll make a motion to close public comment and.
Second.
To close public comment, Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that closes public comment. Uh, do we have any other questions before we close the public hearing? Um, all right, so, uh, you know, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Um, and a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Um, so that brings it back to the board for deliberation or findings. Does anyone want to, do they all have any thoughts or want to make findings?
Um, is, is there any way I could poll the board before we go to a vote?
Would people like to make a poll of their, you're more than welcome, any one of you to speak up if you choose to.
I, I'm one hundred percent in favor of this. I think that building is, is, is definitely unique, and it's set back more so than really anything else. The way it is shaped on one thirty two, it, it is, it's a tricky, narrow lot, and as cars approach at fifty miles an hour, I, I see it all day that it is a hard access point, and without clear signage, it's not going to be lit, it's not going to be backlit at night, it's not going to be a detriment to, you know, and, and again, it's uniqueness in its lot, as, as Attorney Lawler has described. Um, it fulfills the spirit of what I would consider to be the variance request. Um, you know, it's a business who's trying to be a, you know, good, good, you know, part of our community, uh, doing the right thing, and it's, you know, it's just a, it's just weird the way it's set up right now, and I don't necessarily, even though my recommendation was, or question was about flipping the signage, but I get it. I see it from both points of view for sure, and, um, it would, it would leave that, that other end of the building, um, you know, without proper signage as well. So it's a, it's a tricky one. But, um, so, I'm in favor.
Does, does the, uh, does the applicant believe switching the sign to the front would be a detriment?
Yes, I mean, that's why I've talked to Ron about it. Yeah. Because of the, because of coming up fast on one thirty two.
Not that. I, I mean, the, you have the, you have the street sign, but I mean, are they seeing the sign on the side other than from the Christmas Tree Parking Lot?
Yes, they do. You can, you do see it from one thirty two because it's, the Christmas Tree Parking Lot's open. It may not in ten years when the trees grow more, but right now you certainly can, yeah.
So again, if I'm coming from the lights of the mall, straight through, heading towards the airport rotary, I'm going to see that sign on my upper right-hand side.
Correct.
Of my sort of windshield, so to speak, as I approach, and then I'll see the street sign just as I'm ready to turn into the Y.
You'll also see, and if we get the variance request, you'll also see the sign in, in the building, and that'll.
Yeah.
Make it much easier from both directions.
Yep, clearly there was a sign. There's a history of having double signs there, as Mr. Bodenseek's pointed out to us already, so it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, uh.
Uh, anyone else? Mark, I mean, Attorney Lawler asked where people were leaning it, so it sounds like, Aaron, you're leaning towards it. Paul and Herb, Mark, you seemed to, I didn't really get it clear, but Paul and Herb, are you one way or the other here?
I'm leaning towards approving. Paul.
I didn't get that, Herb.
I'm leaning towards approving.
Yeah, it was a blind.
I just hope I'm approving for the correct reason, but that's my gut instinct.
Uh, I, I would not be in favor of this. I, I don't feel we have, um, variance findings for, for such a thing. I, I think that the town made sign code for a reason, and I don't think this is, um, extreme outlier that, that we need to be giving a variance for. Mark, did you, I don't, didn't really get where you were at with it.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just thinking of it, of it, from a different standpoint. I mean, those three properties, Cardy's, Harbor Freight, and McDonald's, um, I've literally seen, you, you know, uh, what do they call it? Like hella lift out of there for horrible accidents, people trying to turn left there. I don't know if this becomes a safety issue or not. Um, I, I don't believe the property is necessarily an outlier, but I, it certainly is a safety concern. Uh, I don't know.
Which, again, is something we should have a special permit provision that allows us to grant through a special permit.
Correct, I understand.
Criteria. I just, a variance isn't, it's, you know, I get it, but variances aren't meant, you know, it doesn't say in there that we get carte blanche if there's a safety concern. It's just not the way.
It, it does, it does, um, Mr. Dewey, talk about hardship, and that's the hardship, and I think that you have the very, again, you know, as, um, Mr. Webb and, um, and Herb stated, that, you know, they, they certainly think the variance requirement. I think you have a reasonable basis to find that the unique situation of the lot exists and that you could grant the variance, or really.
But i- if I could, if I could mention this, so if we looked at Harbor Freight, where I, you know, I'm going in there a fair bit, you can't turn left, you can't cross lanes, they have a, they have a sign on the, you know, on the street. They do not have a one thirty two facing sign, but they do have one facing the opposite direction. I believe also McDonald's is the same.
But both of those are, well, McDonald's has the giant pre-existing arches that pre, long pre-exist the sign code, and they've been up forever.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying. McDonald's is. Traffic. It's a, what I'm making a point here is that it's a similar type lot. I- in fact, the Cardy's has technically two entrances. It has one off Nightingale and one off one thirty two. It, it's just, it is a very similar type of lot that's, you know.
But the, with respect to the, um, Harbor Freight, that building is directly almost on the street, comparatively speaking, with the Cardy's building, which is set way back, and, um, you know, and has, you know, has that situation going for it. So I, I do, I think, and I'm not suggesting you that the, um, Harbor Freight Building isn't unique either. I mean, because that's, that's a, when that was built, that was the old Starbucks. I mean, that was, that was put in a, in a very precarious spot and built and changed, but I haven't done the analysis. But I do think, uh, that the, um, the building, the Cardy's building, because of how it's situated, because of how it's angled, because of the, um, of the, the approaches of one thirty two, as Aaron indicated, the speeds of cars, that it falls, that's the, that's the hardship. But the, how the building falls in the lot is unique, and how the lot is structured with the, with the in and out Y is unique, and that all goes to topography of the building, I mean, of the lot, and, uh, but ma- mainly the structure, and that's, and that's what we're in. I think you have a reasonable basis to.
Mr. Chairman.
We had the same thing with, with a, with a pool and something on, on Route twenty eight last meeting, where it, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't ve, it doesn't vary enough from the lots that were around it, and that was not approved.
I mean, Harbor, look at Harbor Freight. They, I'm sure they would love to have a sign facing one thirty two, but they chose to put it on the side. They complied. You know, a- again, I think town council should probably look at Route one thirty two and change the sign code because people are driving faster. You know, these things need an update. It's not our job. This is, that's above our pay grade here, like, you know. One board member, you need, you need three in favor, no, you need four in favor, I guess.
I need four for a variance.
Yeah.
Chairman, um, one of the, one of the requirements, or one test for a zoning variance is, um, relates to the intent and purpose of the zoning law. Uh, I would like to, I can surmise what the intent and purpose of the zoning law was for signs here was not to have so many of them, so it doesn't look like, you know, Route nine or Route one. But, but I don't know. I mean, that's my, that's my judgment.
And I, I agree with you, Paul, but because of the size of this building and where they're located, that, y- you can't look at that building and see that white in front the way it is. It's an empty, it's essentially a sign that's empty. And, and look at that and say that that's offensive with the one beside it. It's not, like I said in the very beginning, it's not even remotely garish. And it's, it's very in keeping with, uh, you know, the color scheme, everything else is consistent with the bylaw, and that's part of the variance requirements. And, and that's, and that's what, and I think it's in keeping, the intent of the bylaw was to make sure that it didn't turn into, um, you know, uh, you know, Route one up in, um, you know, Lynn, Lynnfield and all that area. Um, but it's not, and, and, and that is the intent of the bylaw, and thank you for bringing that up. So it is completely consistent with that, and I think that there's sufficient, um, um, you know, you know, evidence for the board to make that finding.
Okay, well, we got to cut off the deliberation to close the public hearing. It's just board members who should be talking at this.
And I, and I thank you for the allowing me that, um.
I, I, again, I think some of you guys were on the board when McDonald's came in because they wanted to put the second drive-through, and they're complying with sign code. Their sign, I think, is too big, but they don't have one and two signs. I mean, I, I, that setback from, I just, I have a really hard time going down through the zoning district and looking at other businesses and seeing anything extremely unique about this lot. Um, there's a very large Cardy's sign out on the street, and I, I think it would make sense, maybe, that the sign, they should choose to have their sign face forward instead of having on the sign it's on, and they can do that by right.
That's what I think.
I'm just one board member, so if someone wants to make findings.
So Attorney Lawler, it sounds like you're not going to get your variance here, so do you want to withdraw?
Well, I'm the only one dis- dissenting. I don't know if others.
No, I'm, I'm running along that same line. I, I think it would make more sense just to turn the sign.
Well, I have a question. Why was the, um, beginning with the World Market, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond had both signs on the building. Why did World Market, they must have had a reason for not putting a sign up? Um, so, uh, some, somebody, uh, must have, you know, complained about it or had a problem with it. I'd like to know more about that history. But now I'm kind of leaning more towards, uh, Jake's end of things because I just, I don't like to, um, you know, make precedence or.
I don't think you'd make precedent in this case. It's a very big lot.
Yeah, that, that would be a little hard, but.
So, so, Attorney Law, do you want someone to make findings? I.
Uh, let me, can I, can I start with my client very quickly?
Hi, may I excuse myself for a moment?
Sure.
Okay.
I. I've had the opportunity to consult with my client. I think we're going to withdraw the application, and I want to thank the board for its time. I know you're all volunteers, and, um, I think it's, uh, the best to, uh, regroup and try to, uh, figure out another approach to this.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, um, have appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three two withdrawn without prejudice. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Uh, Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Oh, you're back?
No.
Paul Pinnard.
Sorry. Favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor. So, appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three two is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you, Attorney Lawler.
Yep, thank you, uh, gentlemen. Thank you, uh, Anna and Jeanette as well.
All right, so, moving on to new business, appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three seven, Cape Club K nine Incorporated has, as tenant, has filed for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash thirty three C one conditional uses in the I N D Industrial District. The applicant requests to modify conditional use special permit number two thousand eight dash zero six two to allow kenneling of dogs during the day and overnight. Specifically, the applicant requests to delete condition number four of the special permit number two thousand eight dash zero six two pursuant to section two forty thir, two forty thirty three C one and by reference, section two forty twenty seven C two. and by reference, section two forty twenty-seven C two and by further reference, section two forty one twenty-five C. The subject property is located at thirty Perseverance Way, Unit seven, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, two nine five as parcel zero zero seven dash zero zero G. It's located in the industrial IND zoning district. And then I think I will also read in appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero three eight Cape Club K nine Incorporated has, as tenant, has filed for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash thirty-three C one conditional use in the IND industrial district. The applicant seeks a conditional use special permit to allow kenneling of dogs during the day and overnight pursuant to section two forty C, two forty thirty-three C one and by reference section two forty twenty-seven C two and by further reference, section two forty one twenty-five C. The subject property is located thirty Perseverance Way, Unit seven, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, two nine five as parcel zero zero seven dash zero zero G. It's located in the industrial IND zoning district. Um, so sitting on this will be, again, our regular members, myself, Herb Bodenseek, Paul Pinnard, Mark Hanson and Aaron Webb. And who do we have here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you whenever you're ready.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Dan Creedon. I'm an attorney with an office in Hyannis. I'm here on behalf of your applicant, Cape Club K nine Inc. Here with me this evening are Yuri and Kamaya Uzicek, who are the principals, principal owners of the applicant. It is uh, Mr. Chair, as you indicated in reading the record, the uh, add into the record an application to modify special permit number two thousand eight sixty-two, uh, which was granted as a conditional use special permit to allow for uh, the kenneling of dogs in the industrial zone uh, pursuant to two forty thirty-three C one, uh, which was also pursuant to the requirement to obtain from the town under uh, the ordinary town code four oh three, section five, a commercial kennel license, which is what my client is seeking. Just by way of some background and history here, my client purchased the business assets of this business from the prior owner and operator, uh, Coda's Place Inc., Principal Wayne Kendrick in December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and uh, at that time, uh, Coda's Place had been operating there uh, for what appears to be approximately five years from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. Prior to that, Holly Tenero uh, under the business name Whiskers Pet Grooming had obtained the special permit that we're seeking to modify. At that time, uh, Ms. Tenero came forward to the board. She was proposing to expand her uh, dog grooming business to include kenneling of dogs. Um, she also proposed to add a fenced exterior area as part of that application. Um, she was supported there when she presented her application by uh, the landlord for this property, Jim Burke, who was also the uh, trustee of the condominium association at that time. Uh, she made representations to the board and the board made findings that she expected to be kenneling uh, roughly sixty dogs. Um, she obtained the special permit subject to six conditions, one of which says that there would be no overnight uh, keeping of dogs. And that is what we're seeking to modify. Um, at this time, we're asking to modify that special permit to remove that condition because my client um, in addition to uh, its effort to obtain a commercial kennel license under four oh three five, which requires both site plan approval and, which we have, and uh, a special permit under two forty twenty-seven C two. Um, they also uh, want to uh, have the ability to keep the dogs overnight. Um, just looking at the way that uh, four oh three five, which is part of the um, the rest of the town code under dog control sets up, it says that uh, in order to obtain a kennel license, an applicant must obtain site plan review and then go to the zoning board uh, to see if the property meets the requirements of two forty twenty-seven service and distribution district. And if so, under subsection C, conditional uses, subsection C two kennels, subject to two forty one twenty-five C. So we would suggest that um, I, I think the purpose of that is to make sure that the location is appropriate. Uh, and that finding was made in two thousand eight and I would suggest to the board that it's true to this day. And in support of that, I would suggest there have been no noise complaints there. The use has been in existence since two thousand eight to present. Um, it was an interim owner, as I said, Coda's Place, my client took over in December of twenty twenty-three, had the mistaken impression that uh, everything was copasthetic when he, they bought it from the prior owner, came to realize thereafter that they required permits that they didn't have. And then they reached out to me and, and we sought uh, this uh, this permitting effort to uh, obtain the approvals that we need in order to obtain ultimately the commercial kennel license. We have um, something has changed since two thousand eight. I would note uh, Ms. Tenero in two thousand eight was operating from Unit six and Unit seven. After that, I mean, I'm not entirely certain in what year, but um, I can tell you currently the uh, operation is limited to Unit seven. Unit six has a different business in it as a sprinkler. Uh, um, a, a building fire suppression, I believe, uh, business. The business here with this use is harmonious with the rest of the businesses in, in the building. None of the businesses operate overnight. Uh, it's in the industrial zone. There are no uh, residences nearby. You know, keeping the dogs overnight would not disrupt anyone in the other businesses in the building. No one's complained to my client about the dogs that are there. There are six conditions. Uh, we'd be asking to approve this with only five. We'd be asking to delete condition number four so that the dogs could be kept overnight, but the rest of the conditions are relate to construction. There's no construction proposed here. Uh, so that, that one is not applicable. I would suggest um, the condo association approved the use in two thousand eight. It's been continuing since then. Uh, that was condition number two. Condition number three, retail sales not to exceed twenty-five percent of uh, the uh, floor area and no live animal sales. That condition i- is acceptable uh, to my client. And then that my client would be required to maintain a clean, orderly and peaceful and orderless uh, operation. They're, they're doing that now, so they have no problem doing it. Uh, if, if the board is inclined to grant and secure all licenses and permits, which that's what they're undertaking to do by this application here. They've been to site plan review to get approval there. I'd suggest further that under tw- two forty-one twenty-five C two, uh, it does fulfill the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and it does not represent a substantial detriment to the public good of the neighborhood affected. Uh, be happy to answer any questions of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Creedon. Uh, do any board members have any questions to the applicant? Go ahead, Mark.
Um, Attorney Creedon, just a quick question. So you, you're um, you're saying that the, the, the site plan that they have been to was the initial one in, in two thousand eight, permitted the use. Do you think that um, do you think there would be any value in going to site plan now? And the only reason I say that is because overnight, we don't really, we don't run a kennel. We have known nothing about it. You know, does that change um, by either health, building department or fire department? How that is, how that operates overnight? Like, are, do there have to be staff members? Does there have to be sprinklering if it doesn't already exist? If there's no staff on hand, um, does it have to be monitored?
Mr. Hanson, I, I didn't make myself clear in my presentation. We did go to site plan review in August of this year and we were approved subject to permitting from the board. So we've been there and done that, so to speak.
Okay, all right. That was my, that was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I, I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, we have a special permit provision. I think the only thing we just have, as a board, have to consider is, is two forty twenty-seven C two A, which would be if there's any restrictions or anything we want to, we feel we need to put in there to, you know, the the bylaw gives us that, the special permit gives us that authority there. And I don't, you know, again, it's in an industrial area. If it was in a backyard abutting someone else's, you know, residential zone, I think it would be a concern, but I think it's a space that, that probably makes sense, but I don't, if anyone can think of anything we should consider putting in there.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, two forty thirty-three C for industrial district is a conditional kennels are provided as a conditional use. And so I um, and having there have been no complaints asked you during the day, I would uh, I would suspect that during the night it'd be less noisy. But there's no one in that area at night anyway, that, that I'm aware of. Um, it's under a power line. And so I would be, I would look favorably upon this.
Attorney Creedon, how do they, is this, will someone be there twenty-four seven when there's dogs, like overnight? Will someone be on property all night?
That's a good question. I don't think so, but I, I would defer that to my client. Yuri, are you on?
This is Kamaya.
Hi, Kamaya.
Hi, um, so depending on what would be required, um, from my understanding, most other boarding facilities do not have people that stay overnight. They um, put the money into very good camera systems with very sensitive motion detect, um, other things like fire alarms, CO2 detection. And they make sure that staff, that whoever they're like manager, assistant manager is very close to premises. So if something, or the owner is close to premises, so if something was to happen, anyone who has access to the camera, which typically is owner or owner and manager would keep an eye on them through the night. And then anything that happens would come through to them.
Okay. And Attorney Creedon, is it Board of Health that is the sort of licensing authority here in terms of, you know?
Town manager.
It's just town manager. Okay.
That's our next stop if you're inclined to approve.
Okay, so just to board members, so, so uh, two forty twenty-seven C two A says the board may impose reasonable conditions, including without limitations, measures for security and the reduction or containment of noise as rendered such uses as inoffensive as practicable, practical. So it's just a matter of, you know, I mean, maybe we do condition it that there be electronic monitoring, you know, always in place when, when animals are there. I don't, does that building have a, a monitored fire alarm system in it? Already? It doesn't have sprinklers, I think someone said, or I know it's a sprinkler guy next door, but maybe it doesn't.
Kamaya, do you know?
If it has, uh, I'm sorry, what was it?
A monitor, fire alarm system, like if, if smoke was detected, it would call a dispatch center.
I would believe so. I know that we have, the fire department comes and checks out the building at least once a year and they have never found anything to go against having, you know, dogs there through the day. So I would assume that because even with staff there, if a fire happens, you know, you're going to be going crazy trying to get the dogs out. So I would assume that they do, that there is one. I can definitely check it out.
Okay. And then what, what's the total capacity of number of dogs you'd want to be able to have overnight? I know for the daycare and stuff it's different, but what would your overnight? You know, maximum be?
The current setup, how the daycare is, um, and based off of regulations for what a kennel for overnight would be, we would be looking at no more than six dogs at a night.
Six, six or sixty?
Six.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought I heard sixty earlier.
I was, that was the, in the application in two thousand eight, she was seeking uh, up to sixty dogs for kenneling, but again, that wasn't overnight.
Okay. Yeah, got it. My questions are answered. Does any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not a voting member for this, but I guess I just had a question. If we are amending the existing conditional use special permit, it, so I, I presume that continues to be valid. I guess I'm not sure why we need, why the application for a second conditional use special permit?
Good question. And I always do it when I'm seeking to modify in the alternative in, in case there is something that's found during the uh, hearing with the one that I'm seeking to modify that is defective so that I'm not back to square one. So it's definitely filed in the alternative in that if the board's inclined to approve the modification of oh eight sixty-two, then I would withdraw um, the second application as unnecessary.
Manny always there to keep us on, on track. I mean, again, I think, you know, this is a clearly identified use as through a condition, a conditional use, so I, I, I think we're relatively safe to to move it in that, in that fashion, just modifying it.
We, do we want to put anything just that?
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I was just gonna say, do we want to say anything and it, just throwing it out there, that uh, they would employ um, any normal safety and security measures uh, that would be considered then in the normal operation of an overnight kennel or something?
I think, I think so, like, yeah, any of, you know, industry standard.
Industry, that kind of thing, yeah, yeah. Standard, standard operating for overnight kennels.
Yeah. Yeah, I assume it's probably like some sort of Ring camera type thing, a temperature monitoring and air quality or like, you know, for smoke detection and something like that. You know, no one's there. And then the fire department would want you to have some sort of safety plan if there was an event, what happens, you know, that's filed with them so that they're not just letting dogs run around town?
Chairman, I just have a quick comment to that. I think that's a little vague personally. I think that they, you know, they've been to site plan interview, they've been to fire, Board of Health. It's been approved at this point. I don't think us saying that they should be forced to, we don't even know what those, what those standard operating procedures are. So we're just sort of throwing it out there that there's, that, you know, if we want them to have the monitoring, we should say we want them to have the monitoring and, and, but again, I, I just don't know as a business owner, as their, you know, the owners of the kennel, they're going to do what they think is going to be best to ensure that a customer drops a dog off, the dog's going to be safe overnight. You know, so I just, I think it's a little vague for us to just say, let's follow some standard procedures. We don't even know what those standard procedures are.
Can we, can we end the public hearing and bring it back to the board?
Yeah, so let's uh, let's, we need to open for public comment. Um, we did not receive anything for our public comment. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close public comment. Any a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote to close public comment. Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. And now I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Um, Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Um, so yeah, I think it's just a matter of condition. I, I, one thing I think, I think it's, it, it's not being asked for, but just to make sure that the dogs are kept inside because one of the, the provisions of the special permit is, you know, sound containment. I don't think they had an intention of having them outside, but again, this could transfer to a new owner or something someday. So um, I think we just, the dogs overnight are kennelled inside um, so that they're not building.
And that, and, and I would be in complete agreement with that. And I think the owner, my, you know, with six dogs would do the same. I don't think there's going to be excess. Like, you know, the animal inn, for instance, has the ability for dogs to be inside and then walk the way out, you know, into a, a gated area outside. But I think that's a condition that I would make, I would agree with one hundred percent. I just think the vagueness of, you know, of a requirement saying that, you know, to do whatever the standard operating procedures of overnight kennels is, and we have no idea what those are, is, is just vague.
I, I also wonder if it's not picked up in condition number six, which requires them to obtain all necessary permits and licenses.
But that was my question. We, the board, the town manager is the only other person that's monitoring that, like natural resources and animal control have nothing to do with this. Board of Health has nothing to do with it. It's sort of like.
Did fire make any recommendations?
The, the women, to get a license, okay, they need a license. Then the women, uh, to get a license, okay, they need a license for an overnight kennel, right?
Yes, or even, either way, any kind of kennel, commercial kennel.
Well, it it is a kennel, it's a daycare kennel now, I guess, I don't know how to define kennel, but I'm just saying for an overnight capability. I believe you need a license for that, and what are the requirements for a license, I don't wanna duplicate and overlap them.
Is there a requirement?
Yeah, I have it here, site plan review, special permit from the zoning board. Um. Town manager holds a public hearing, may is, may impose conditions or restrictions as he or she may deem necessary for the public good. Hundred dollar annual fee. The name and address of the owner of each dog kept in any kennel, there's, there's other requirements. That's it.
Sounds like it's laid out, I think it's just a quick, you know.
Our purview here is just making sure that it's not disruptive to the neighborhood, I I mean, I don't think the safety of the dogs is really on our purview, I think that's.
Right. That's correct.
So I'm happy to move it forward if, or if someone wants to make findings, someone ready? So we're gonna modify appeal number. Uh.
Oh wait, sixty-two?
Oh eight. Two thousand eight. Dash zero six two, um, to strike, um, condition four. Or you want us to modify condition four?
I'd for, I'd prefer that it be strict, and that's how I applied.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to, um. In response to appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero three nine, um. To modify special permit two zero zero eight dash zero six two, to strike condition number four. And then, I don't have that special permit, probably need to add. So are you comfortable adding, if we add that the dogs, you know, after. Normal operating business hours that you had listed, that the, the dogs be inside?
That's acceptable.
Agreeable, is that?
Mister Chair, are you um, going through the findings right now?
Well, do we need to go through the findings if we're just modifying?
Well, the condition one is modi- modifying the two thousand and eight special permit.
Okay. So.
So it might be good to go through the findings first.
Okay, sorry, I thought we can sort of shortcut it. I will backtrack, um. All right, in appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero three seven, um. We made the following finds, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section two forty dash thirty-three C allows for a conditional use special permit, and after evaluation of all the evidence pre- presented by the applicant. Proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of a zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Um, and so in modifying um, condition four, we, we, by removing it, we find that. Um, it falls within this category, um, and could move forward, um. So I make a motion to. Grant two forty dash zero three four, as discussed, is that acceptable, Anna?
Zero three seven, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, zero three seven.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, her vote see.
In favor.
Paul Pennard. Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Okay, and so then, in granting it, um, we've got special conditions. Uh, special good, special permit number twenty twenty-four dash zero three seven is granted to K Club K nine Inc. as ten in pursuit of section two forty dash thirty-three C. One conditional use in the industrial um, district to modify conditional use special permit. Number two zero zero eight dash zero six two to allow kennelium dogs during the day and overnight, simply applicant requested delete condition number four. Of the special permit number, um, two zero zero eight dash zero six two pursuant. To section two forty dash thirty-three C one and by reference section two forty twenty-seven C two. And by further reference section two forty-one twenty-five C, the subject property is located thirty. Preservance Way, Unit Seven and um, Unit Seven, Hyannis, Massachusetts.
Yeah, point water, Mr. Chairman, I don't think you voted on the uh.
Sorry, I'm also, well, I I made the motion, but yes, I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And so, do we need to condition just our one condition, Anna?
Uh, what, to add the dogs must be kennelled inside overnight?
Yes.
Oh, you could add an another condition.
Okay, and is, are, is everyone, do we wanna do anything about security monitoring, anything, or everyone feels comfortable that would get covered somewhere else?
Let, let them.
All right, so just add the condition that um, the dogs will be kept inside, um, overnight when there's. Um, and and particularly when there's no staff on property, um, the dogs will be inside. Um, do I have a roll call vote on approving the condition, her vote and see?
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, um. So Attorney Green, can we, we can, um. Uh, we don't need to do twenty twenty-four dash zero three eight, correct?
Now, I'd request it to be withdrawn.
Okay, I'll make a motion to withdraw twenty twenty-four dash zero three eight. Roll call vote on withdraw, her vote and see.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
Favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so that is withdrawn, thank you, thank you, Attorney Creedon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate your time.
All right, our last two items of business tonight, appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero three nine, twenty-five Falmouth Road LLC has applied. Has filed an appeal of administrative official decision in accordance with MGL Chapter Forty A, Section seven, eight, and fifteen, and Section two forty dash eighty-eight. Uh, of the Barnstable zoning ordinance, the appellant is appealing decision of the building commissioner and issuing building permit, B L D C. Twenty-two dash two two seven dated September seventeen, twenty twenty-four, the prop, the permit was initially denied pending. The receipt of a narrative to explain the expansion of the mechanical bays on the property. The appellant's position is that the permit fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records and files which conflict. With the determination in issue, the issue of the building permit, the subject property is located ninety-five Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts. As shown on Assessor's Map three one one as parcel zero seven three, and is located in the highway business HB and Residence B R B zoning districts. Um, and then concurrently, we have appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero four zero. Twenty-five Falmouth Road LLC has filed an appeal of administrative official decision in accordance with MGL Chapter Forty A, Section seven, eight. And fifteen and Section two forty dash eighty-eight of the Barnstable zoning ordinance, the appellant is appealing. The decision of building commissioner in a letter dated September fourth, twenty twenty-four, the appellant believes the determination fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records. And files which conflict with the determination and do not address. The concerns raised as set forth in the appellant's enforcement letter, there's a correspondence, the subject property is located at ninety-five Falmouth Road. And one twenty-three Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map three one one, parcel zero seven three and zero seven eight. Lots are located in the highway business HB and Residence RB zoning district. Uh, Attorney Nickerson, our Attorney Ford. Um, if you wanted to just give us a update and let us know where we're going with these two tonight.
Sure, um, this is uh, Mr. Ford, and I I represent uh, twenty-five Falmouth Road LLC, the appellant. Um, Attorney Nickerson, I believe, is here as well, he represents the property owners. Um, yesterday, in checking with the board, um, as to whether there'd been anything filed. Um, Anna sent us in the afternoon a copy of a um. A memo, a brief, a legal memo that uh, Mr. Nickerson had filed on behalf of his clients. Um, in which he goes to uh, some length on a legal issue, uh, the issue of agreement. Um, generally concluding that if my client is not a a person agreed. Uh, then the board uh, has no right to hear this hearing, hear this petition on the merits. And therefore suggests that um, in that memo, uh, that perhaps you should seek town council's. Uh, review, um, but that you might have to bifurcate your your proceedings. Having seen that memo yesterday, um, I went to your rules and um. My recollection of your rules is under Section three, um, D, that for matters that come in with less than one week. The board can um, continue those uh, for more time for additional evidence. Um, so I advised Anna today that I would be seeking a continuance so that I could reply, file a responsive memo. That um, if the board decides to seek town council opinion, they could send both. Um, but at least before the board opened the hearing, you'd have a memo from our side on those legal issues as well. Um, since it is a uh, less than forty-eight hour request for a continuance, I'm making it in person in accordance with the requirement of your rules. One, and two, I did alert um, Attorney Nickerson, and he indicated that his client had no objections. To that continuance so that we could file a responsive memo. I'm sure Attorney Nixon can speak for himself, but that's, that's what I understand to be the state of it at this point, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, I don't have any problem moving it, moving it forward to a continuance, does anyone else have any? Issues with that, otherwise I'll make a motion, did you, I think you requested in your letter the January meeting, is that correct?
Yes, uh, January eighth.
And Attorney Dickerson, is that all right for you and your client?
It is, Mr. Chairman, one thought I had was that. To the extent Attorney Ford is filing a responsive memorandum, might that be done in such a way? For us to review and perhaps reserve the right to. Uh, respond to that in advance of the January eighth hearing, maybe that's something Attorney Ford and I can work out.
Yeah, I think you guys can work that out, and and with the building commissioner, I mean, if if it comes to January eighth, and you guys are still working on things. Feel free to come back and ask us for a continuance or or prior to that.
Um, I I can make a representation that I will uh, serve it on Attorney Nickerson. Uh, with plenty of time, so he'd have an opportunity to file a rebuttal or uh, seek additional time if he needed, so. Happy to participate, our two offices agreed today that. When either one of us files anything on this case with with the board, we would make sure that we copied the other party.
Great. So I'll make a motion to continue appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero three nine and twenty twenty-four dash zero four zero. To January eighth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh one, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on approving the continuance, her vote and see.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
Any else?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, um, so you guys, we will see you in the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just so you guys know that it's in person.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, moving along, last thing, we've got some correspondence, some of these are kind of outdated, but I guess we have to read them anyways. Cape Cod Commission Subcommittee Hearing Notice on Quaker Road Monopole was scheduled for Monday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Cape Cod Commission Hearing Notice on Quaker Road Monopole scheduled for Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Cape Cod Commission Committee on Planning Regulation Hearing Notice for Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four at one P M. Cape Cod Commission Meeting Notice for Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four at three P M. Cape Cod Commission Hearing Notice for the Long Pond Road Monopole Project for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four at five P M. Um, hope you all made it to all those meetings, cause they're in the past, and next up, Cape Cod Commission Hearing Notice for Sandwich Community Health Center. For Thursday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at five P M. And a Cape Cod Commission Hearing Notice for the Evergreen Pickleball on Monday, December second, twenty twenty-four at five P M. Do we have any matters not anticipated? Seeing none, thank you, Counselor Ledkey and Counselor Clark for being here. If you have anything to add. Feel free to speak up, uh. Um, upcoming hearings, we've got December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, which is remote, January eighth, twenty twenty-five in person, and January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, which is remote. Um, we have a new board member, um, who unfortunately wasn't here tonight, Rodney Tavano, and I believe we have another board member in process. Um, being approved by the town council, so we will have a very full board, um, which is good to keep warm and, you know. Take, I guess, the pressure off all of us to be at every single meeting if we can't be. Um, motion to adjourn, uh, I need a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, her vote and see.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Thank you, guys, have a good night.